Alright, well then without further ado, again, thank you so much for coming. Let's get to the good stuff.
Alright, thanks. Well, I appreciate everybody having me here today and obviously the fact that we're spending our Saturday afternoon having this conversation about insurance. Tells me this is a very serious topic, very serious time. And you know, I promise you, I'm here to provide as much clarity as I can for you and I won't leave here today until everybody feels that they've gotten a level of information or progress they're looking for. So hopefully that is what you're looking for today. So just a little bit about me, I am, I grew up in Calabasas, so I grew up in these mountains and they mean a lot to me, I've got a lot of very fond memories. Used to take, in the eighties, used to take the beach bus for ten cents to Topanga. And did a lot of fun, fun stuff, very fond memories. So it's obviously, this community holds a very fond place in my heart, so it's beautiful, it's the best of so many worlds, which is why you live here. So again, I want to help be a resource and provide as much information to you as I can, as it relates to the Fair Plan. So obviously, understanding that a good number of you are here because you've been impacted by the recent events. You know, this meeting was actually scheduled originally in January, in the fall or January, before even the Franklin fire started. So this is even before these fires occurred. There were questions about the Fair Plan that you folks had. So again, I want to do everything I can to help explain how the Fair Plan works, what our role is in California. My role is unique on their broker liaison, so in addition to providing support in the field, I also train and support brokers. There's I think close to fifty thousand brokers in California. And I'm also a broker myself, so I live in Northern California in El Dorado County. Just to give you an idea, it's, El Dorado County is where Salt Lake Tahoe sits and a hundred percent of where our county is on the Fair Plan. So I'm a customer of the Fair Plan as well. I saw, I've been involved with this process extensively since the Camp Fire, which was a fire in paradise. That was really the catalyst, if you look at the history of where the market trends, the insurance trends changed in California, where the area that we're in is called the Wildland Urban Interface, it's the mountains basically. And but that's the area that really, since that point in time, the insurance companies were, have been drawing back out of your feeling that they were not comfortable writing in these areas due to fire risks and increased fire risks. But again, what you'll see and you may or may not know, but even like in areas in the San Fernando Valley or areas that are flat, it's still very challenging and it's been about two years since really the majority of the state has been in a full crisis. So it's not just the mountains, it's expanded beyond, well beyond for a lot of reasons. So that's why the Fair Plan is growing and it's becoming more of a common common option out there unfortunately. Our goal, our goal is to not be needed, our goal is to see the market be restored. So I'm going to just run through a quick overview, not to rush it, but I just, I just know that you know, you all have a lot of more direct questions and I wanted to give you that level of support. But I also want to give you an overview of the Fair Plan because it is unique. And I just want you to understand how it works, what the framework is, and then answer any questions you have. And again, I am not a claims adjuster, but we have a team that's available. And we've worked this, in this manner at other events in Santa Monica, at other locations. We've got a team of adjusters available right now, so we will, we will get help today. You will get, if that's what, you came here today to get additional progress or answers or clarification on where your claim is at today, we will get that for you. I can't say we're going to solve anything a hundred percent, but we will move the ball forward for you. And I'll also provide my contact information and I'll offer my support to you. Again, not as an adjuster, but as somebody that can help clarify or tip the ball moving forward for you if it's for some reasons. So who's going to go over? Alright, we're just overviewing the Fair Plan. Okay. So the Fair Plan is also referred to as the insurance of last resort. So what that means basically is if you're ending up in the Fair Plan, it's because nothing else is available. So out of the, I think a hundred fifteen admitted companies and there's over two hundred non-admitted homeowners companies. So out of all those companies that write home insurance in California, if you're at this point where you're being insured by the Fair Plan, it means none of those other companies are offering you, are willing to offer insurance at this time. So the Fair Plan provides basic property coverage regardless of the property's fire risk, ensuring all Californians have access to the peace of mind they deserve. Intended as a temporary insurance safety net for those unable to procure insurance in the voluntary market. So how we work, so we were created by statute in nineteen sixty-eight. And we're not funded, we're not funded by the government, we're private and not for profit. We're backed by all property and casualty insurers that write business in California. And we're part of the residual market. This Zoom thing is blocking my slide. And then we're one of over, it's, oh, okay. So we're one of over thirty similar organizations throughout the US, so other states, so over thirty, thirty states have their plans. They're just all individual entities, so not everything, so we are just for California.
So quick, I don't want to interrupt your flow, but for a lot of people, they have a general idea. But in terms of like new rules that are coming down the pipe, that's probably where they want to know like what new opportunities they have. Like the twenty million for commercial and stuff like that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that, so let me just go through these a little bit quicker. So as you guys see and I saw that, you know, Topanga is a very high rate of growth for the Fair Plan and that really means, anytime you see the Fair Plan growing, it's just a sign that there's less companies or no company is willing to write at this time. So that's, so anytime you're seeing the Fair Plan grow or ask do more or to raise coverages, add more products, go into other areas, all those are signs that we're going away from a solution, a solution outside of the traditional market. So just the type of coverage we provide, so we have dwelling coverage for homes, we have commercial insurance, and we also through the California Earthquake Authority offer earthquake coverage. So the dwelling policy covers any one dwelling types, it's one to four family units. So if you've got a duplex or a fourplex, you can use, you can provide coverage for that. As well as, you know, whether it's, what's unique about the Fair Plan is if you have one policy, you can change your occupancy type, so if you decide to turn your home into a rental property or Airbnb, or just have it be owner occupied or seasonal, you can maintain the same policy, you just change the occupancy type. So again, it accommodates all of those needs. The option for total amount of insurance that's available, it's called TIB, is three million dollars for the dwelling policy. So that was raised about three years ago from, from one and a half. So that's all your collective coverages in total. And obviously, in these markets and lots of markets in California, there's examples where that does not meet the needs that, from a coverage standpoint, that are actually out there. And we do also provide commercial insurance. Commercial insurance was recently increased to twenty million dollars for pre-location. So that's something that is a big jump from where it was previously. But the fact is that there's cases like homeowners association that's really been driving this, where the ask is, in the direction we're going is to get to the point where we're going to write up to a hundred million pre-location. So that's a big, a big jump, but again, the main thing that's driving that is homeowners associations, condo associations, that type of property. Same thing is running out of options for their insurance and the Fair Plans being asked to accommodate that need for them as well.
Sorry, just admitting a few more.
No problem. So earthquake authority, so again, anyone that's interested in earthquake policies, it's through the California Earthquake Authority, just like every other insurance carrier, when you write a new policy, you've got access to the CEA. Some other things to think about is the perils that, there's basically three things, three elements that are on, that are not on a Fair Plan policy, that would be on a traditional homeowner's policy. And that's water damage theft and liability coverage. So those three elements are fulfilled through buying a difference in conditions policy, also known as a DIC policy or a wraparound. But the three elements there are water damage theft and liability. The Fair Plan policy alone covers, should meet all lending requirements too, if you're purchasing a home. There are some opportunities for discounts with the Fair Plan. The Fair Plan is not intended to be competitive, so our discounts aren't traditional, like a traditional insurance company where they're trying to earn your business and entice you to come over to us. It's really more to reward those that are making their homes and their communities more fire safe specifically. So there's a ten percent discount for, I refer to it as home hardening, it's more for safety measures for your homes, so there's, and I'll give you the specific items there. But those are specific to making your home more fire safe. And then an additional five percent is for the immediate surroundings, so that's referred to also as defensible space. So that's five percent. So again, you can qualify for one or the other or both. And you must meet all of the criteria in order to qualify. If you have a Fair Plan policy and don't have those discounts, but you can qualify, just let your broker know and they can help you fill out the form to get that that submitted. And the Fair Plan will send out an inspector just to verify that it's all validated. To qualify for that discount. Another discount you may or may not be aware of, it's a community-wide discount called Firewise.
Oh, we are Firewise.
Alright, okay. Alright. I can't say enough how awesome that is, you know, it's, it's so it's a ten percent discount, hopefully you guys are all, you're all getting that discount.
You have to keep reporting your activities to keep us on Firewise.
Yeah, you have to maintain.
Everybody here.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, right, to most of you here, it's going to quickly introduce your question.
Yeah, yeah.
So every, we, the contact at panketowncouncil.org and our constant contact, we do those mailing lists every month. So we send out reminders about submitting your Fair Plan, excuse me, your Firewise data. If you need any more help or need any help at all, understanding what it is and what we're talking about, happy to explain it to you one-on-one after the meeting. But we do rely on you all submitting your information every year so that we qualify as a community in aggregate for this ten percent discount. We'll talk about that more later, but there is an opportunity for you to submit it online, take a minute.
And I think the bigger picture, I mean, there's obviously lots of reasons why you guys make those efforts to qualify for Firewise, but in my mind, as a broker and talking to customers, is you want to make your community and your house as appealing as possible for the day that these insurance companies do tend to start looking again and looking at houses individually. And they're going to, I would imagine, be drawn to communities that are Firewise communities and homes that are hardened and have extensive defensible space. You know, so again, a lot of the model communities that I've seen out there, that's, this is definitely the template they follow. It's a lot of work, I mean, obviously, you guys know it, defensible space, it's like mowing your lawn, it doesn't, it doesn't, you don't just do it once, it's ongoing, it's expensive, it's, it's very difficult in some cases, but it's worth, it's definitely worth the effort. So again, I applaud you guys for doing that. Okay, so claims, we'll just touch on it here and then kind of get into more detail. But if you do have a claim, you can report it directly on our website or by the phone. You can have a designated person such as a broker initiate the claim for you. And you'll receive an acknowledgement letter by email. And you can just go to our main website and click on Claim and there's a lot of FAQs there just to walk you through, best practices. And again, those have been impacted, I would imagine you're further down the road on that process. We've got our website at cfpnet.com, you can take a picture of this QR code.
The slides are going to be available also.
Yeah, we'll have copies and we'll also be mailing.
It was inaccessible for weeks. Your website was inaccessible to us.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that being the case, I know there was times.
Security reasons, we couldn't get into it, that's what it kept telling me.
Interesting, interesting.
In this area specifically.
Okay.
It's not accessible to your area.
Well, let's give it a try before I go and I'll make sure.
Accessible today, but today's the first time I was able to get on cfpnet.org.
Okay, well, I will make, again, maybe use this QR code because I'm all throughout the state and been out in this market a lot and able to get on, so I don't know if there's certain blockers, but.
It's Topanga.
It's Topanga. It's because it's so awesome here and everybody wants to make it harder maybe, I don't know. But that's the first I've heard of that, honestly. I know there's times that we can get into it initially, when there was a first surge of claims, there were delays in callback, initial callbacks and things like that, because we just got a tremendous surge at once. But all of that should, should have been worked out. But again, we'll make sure everybody can get on there. Alright.
For those of us who can't see, can you just say what it is one more time?
The website?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's www.cfpnet.com.
Alright, so you almost got it.
Yeah. Alright, that's it. And then, well, this is important too, this is my phone number. All of you can tap here. So I've got my email and my phone number, so again, if you are, I'm here to help you guys individually, I don't want you to, even after this, if you need to get ahold of me, you can contact me directly and I will get you the help you're looking for here, I just have a question.
Open it off for those who can't see, two, what the phone number, two one three five two nine eight one two eight, again, two one three five two nine eight one two eight. The email is P as in Peter, Irwin, I R W Y, excuse me, W I N at C as in Cat, F as in Frank, P as in Peter, Net, N as in Nancy, E as in Edward, T as in Tom, dot com. So P Irwin at cfpnet.com. And you can come up here and look at it.
Yeah, and again, I just want to make myself available too, if there's anything you're feeling stuck with or need additional clarification, I will help navigate that.
Okay.
Anyway. So that, that's all I had from a standpoint of slides and presentations, I just feel like carry.
Alright, sorry, can we notice that, I missed a good moment. Alright, everybody. So Tam is going to go ahead and, you know, get like basically a swab of general questions during this next part of the meeting. So probably times like ten to fifteen questions, if you could keep it as concise as possible, that'll enable more people to ask questions. Try to keep it pretty general, it could be something you had personal experience with, but generalize the question like, I received my bill late and then my policy was this, like that sort of thing. So that we can, everybody can benefit from your, from your personal experience. But if you have sort of personal or sensitive info, let's save that for the last portion, the second half of this, where we do the one-on-one. Okay, so Tam, please respect Tam's order, don't talk unless she's called on here. And she's going to go around.
I stand on my toes.
I've heard there are properties in Topanga that aren't always permitted, how does that work?
I can't hear the question.
Oh, but you can have, the microphone. Okay, would you ask you to get it, you sort of tilt it like this and activate.
I hear there are properties in Topanga that aren't always permitted, how is that work?
In terms of what a property.
Yeah, so, I don't know, can you hear me okay without? Yeah, okay. So again, that's a great question and it comes a lot, that comes into play a lot if you're even, if you've got unpermitted add-ons that, when you're selling your house, yeah. So but, but as far as we're concerned, it's more based on the policy you bought, the coverages you bought, the amount of square footage and the application, you know, so really just what you're, we're more concerned with, you own the property, you own the structure, and what all, were we insuring, how many square feet were we insuring, that kind of thing. So again, it's a good question, it's important to keep that information up to date, especially when you're making improvements. But we, as long as the deed and the policy owners match up, then we would pay out accordingly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, my policy was canceled erroneously. And this is a prob, this had been a problem. And then I had to re-go through this whole thing all over again and according to my broker, the check hadn't cleared and it was a day late. Most places have a two-week grace period, it actually did clear, I checked out the whole thing. I went for a nightmare with the broker, with the whole thing, and I, I don't think I'm alone, from other people I hear. So, yeah, and this was happening the day of the fire. And I'm sitting on the phone with the broker, having not a lovely conversation.
Sure.
Very nicely. It was stressful, really stressful. And then I, I knew it was a lie, because I could see that David cleared my back. And they said it came in December second and it should have cleared the first. So what do we do in those kind of instances?
Yeah, good, good question. So for one, you're, you have access to, if you go to, go to our website, there's, you can check the payment status on your policy at any time. So as a, as a consumer, you can go in and just check your policy and your payment status. It'll show what's owed, when the next payment is due, and you can also pay directly online. Your broker, and this is just a good rule of thumb, so we don't have automatic payments as an example. So if you have, like, we have a monthly payment option, but we don't have where it's drafted automatically. If you choose that mode, you've got to be really proactive in going in and making your payment. Same thing with the typical renewal, if you're, if you pay annually and say it's out of an SPRO account, an impound account, you and your broker, and this is more your broker's job, is to be proactive. Sixty days out when renewal comes, that's when you start making sure everything's lined up. Because like mortgages, mortgage information changes, they sell those, your loans, with and without your knowledge all the time, and that information changes. So it's important to make sure sixty days from renewal that everything's lined up, the right, the right mortgagee is getting the bill, they're aware of it, everything's in line and the tenant's should have received. So these are all acknowledgements on the broker's side, that they, they should have a workflow where they're sixty days from the renewal day, they should be monitoring that process proactively with you. As well as, does everything still fit or do any other coverage changes or things that he, that would be needed. But the key is to be proactive and if you get to that crunch time, it shouldn't get there, but there, there are, that's really the key, is you don't want to wait till the day it's due. It's not that he did, but it's, it sounded like it was, it was just unclear until, until it was too late. So, so that's kind of where we run into that. And then the other, the biggest, the biggest place we run into that is when the mortgagee changes and the wrong mortgagee got the bill. And they don't wave their hand and say, oh, we got the bill, it's not us anymore. You usually find out the hard way that your policy was out of force and then you have to rewrite it. But that, that's a, that's the best way to handle it.
I just want to bump off that because I have a similar problem.
Yeah.
My policy started December fifteenth. Paid the first payment, I was waiting for the second payment, bill to come. Didn't come, but it was due January sixteenth. The fire started on the seventh, so I had not received my bill yet. Once the fire started, I completely forgot about it. So after the fire happened, I contacted California Fair Plan and my broker. And I just couldn't get ahold of anyone, because nobody called me back, emails, phone calls. So now I'm, I'm one month past due, the sixteenth. And I'm figuring, okay, so they're going to send a bill. My broker told me, I called on, let's see, February seventh. They're like, okay, it's all cool, you're good, we're working it out. And then my next payment, my third payment would have been February sixteenth. I got a letter on February fifteenth saying my policy is terminated. And I can't, I can't get any action, I haven't even been able to reach California Fair Plan. My broker, I won't say who they are, but they actually haven't been very helpful.
Okay.
And so I'm just wondering, where do you go from there? Because I haven't done anything wrong, it seems like they should just reinstate the policy, I've already got the contract signed.
Same here.
So that's a good, I appreciate you bringing it up, again, I'm sorry, sorry you went through that. So the, the broker, your broker and you, there's, like I said, there's close to fifty thousand of them, I, you know, you can find a different broker if you feel better doing that. I, I think that's, they're getting paid to take care of you. And it's, again, as a broker, I'll say, I take accountability to make sure that everything lines up and we communicate, because they get notices too, they get notices when something's pending cancellation, where they get renewal notices, they get invoice notices, so the brokers get those as well.
Yeah, they actually had gotten those
Yeah.
on the seventh. And yet they didn't tell me
Yeah.
the determination exactly.
So I, I think it's, you know, we all have to, insurance is important, we have to, even though they should be accountable, it's our, it's our assets too, it's like, I, you know, I feel that way, you've got to make sure our bills are getting paid for these big things. And but when there's gray areas, it's like your intentions are there, but you don't even know what, what to do or where to go.
It seems like what I'm going to have to do is start from scratch.
And in case, if it went out of, so if it went out of force, that's what you have to do, but it's, it's something that can be done today. It's not something that takes a long time. If you get somebody that knows what they're doing, it's something that can be done instantly and it should never come to that point. It should never come to that point.
But you know, for more details on that, let's do it in an individualized session so we can get into more generalized questions. Connie, Connie I know had one that she had asked in advance to ask.
Thank you so much for being here, really appreciate you.
Thanks, Connie.
We live here in Topanga about a thousand feet from the burn perimeter and we have smoke and ash damage. We had a adjuster come out a couple of weeks ago, but we've still haven't gotten an acceptance or denial letter. Just wondering what the typical turnaround should be or if it can be beat up because they're saying they're not going to pay for remediation for that. And part of that question is, does it matter that we live in a burn zone?
No, so smoke damage, and again.
Did everybody hear the question?
Yeah.
So every claim, every situation is specific. So to just say generally, this is how it is handled. So turnaround should be very quick, because there's high urgency, high focus on helping everyone that's displaced right now.
So far, no, and we have to, we have, sorry. Human tells us we have to have a denial letter in order to try to get funds. And we haven't been able to get that and it's been a while now that we're living in the house with ash that we're trying to clean up ourselves. And some of it is toxic because there's lead in the ash. And we need to replace the attic insulation, they're saying they're not going to pay for any of that, because it's not black.
Well, it doesn't sound like you've gotten a resolution to your claim. But, but so the thing is, there's a lot of questions around smoke damage right now. And the fact is, smoke, for us, it's, there has to be physical damage from the smoke. And so if there's, so again, there's, there's different expectations. Like I said, I've been to disaster recovery centers here in Eaton and spent a lot of time talking to people and I know how bad it is, it's awful. It's awful. And but again, we're going to follow through with every commitment that's our, that we're obligated to within our policy, it's basic coverage. But we do cover smoke damage, the physical damage of smoke. And that's something that, again, there are cases, we don't, we're not going to go in and clean your, clean your floor, clean your counters. It's.
A remediation costs like seventeen thousand dollars. And they're saying they're not going to do it.
So you haven't had them, but they haven't resolved that yet, so you're, you're listening.
It's been weeks.
It's been looping, endlessly looping, yeah.
So, so we'll get an answer today, we'll have, I promise you, that's something we can do, we can have an adjuster talk to you today. So if anybody is at that point where they're, they're waiting for a response, like it's just, it's been too long, I would say every three to five days you should have some progress.
We, so that, sorry, sorry, just, so that's the timeframe people should expect, three to five days?
That's why, yeah.
Okay.
It's been like, how many weeks?
Alright, so a lot of you know, that's ridiculous. Lots of ridiculous.
Yeah, so obviously there's thousands of claims every year right now.
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm here, we'll push you to the front line today. We've got a team of people and that, and again, no one's doing that intentionally. And I'll tell you things, a lot of different things happen where the wrong people put, however the claim was submitted, maybe the phone number's there or not there, they're calling the wrong information.
Putting the onus on, you said it a few times, and I, I have a challenge with that, putting the onus on the human of saying you've done it wrong. I think it's.
No, no, I know, I'm not saying, I didn't say, I didn't say, I didn't, so I'll give you a real example, so I'm not trying to, so insurance agents have what's called a management system. So if you've been with the same insurance agent for twenty years, and maybe that's the case, ten years even, they have what's called a management system. And this is what, this is the real thing that happened, where people had, so they said a main, a landline is their main number, is an example for that customer. It's always calling that landline. And then obviously, the world's changed, in the past ten years, probably nobody has landlines anymore. But that's something that kept coming up where the policy document, the details of where it was populated with the claim, where it's meant to be landline, that it wasn't even accessible. So there was, so some of the, some of the times when people were saying, hey, no one's called me, no one's called me, then we'd go back and find out that when the claim was submitted, the old number was tied to it, it's not. So, so again, okay, well, we're here to take care of you, we're here to take care of you.
It's a possibility, error is a possibility, and slowness is a possibility.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Just be patient.
Yeah.
How much do you recommend when after a fire like this, rebuilding is really expensive because it's so competitive? What do you recommend people insure per square foot, cost per square foot?
That is a good question and it's something good to be aware of. It's a, to me, it's a fluid number, because if you go into any zip code and take the same square footage and drop it into any zip code in California, it's going to be a different answer. So there's a term called insure your home to value, which means that's the right amount. which means that's the right amount of coverage you should have, but you should also know what the building cost per square foot is, um, when you're, when you're factoring it in, and that's how much insurance you should have. So
So but, um, after a fire, that just skyrocketed. So how do we estimate what the cost per square foot?
Well, I I don't think, uh, it doesn't, it shouldn't skyrocket. It, but my experience has been with the Calvor Fire, the Paradise Fire. Um, there are a lot of major fires where they've gone in and rebuilt after these, and obviously, the cost of build to build in in Paradise is probably less than it is here. But the, it stayed pretty, stayed pretty consistent because there's different things, because they're doing things in both. There, so so some things end up being more competitive, but other things are, I mean, everything's more expensive today. Uh, I know Palisades, a lot of the properties are very
So what would you estimate or recommend?
It it it's the quality of your build. So a standard build, a standard built home, you know, in our market, it's probably been three, three to three hundred to three fifty a square foot, but I mean, that's just an arbitrary number. It really comes down to the quality of the building you want. There's lots of variables there, the quality of your cabinets, the structure, the square footage, you know, so so it's really not, uh, uh, something you can just answer.
And the build number will be less than what you see like in the Realtor numbers, right? So you see a home selling for nine hundred, a thousand, eleven hundred square feet. To build it is like a fraction of that.
You already own the land, you already own the land.
I would say, but kind of maybe five to six hundred is maybe more contemporaneous, but yeah, anywhere from three to six.
And that's big. Probably local contracts.
I'm in local contracts.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You tell us.
It's very difficult to build here, you know, when you're talking about, you know, the all the demolition and the hazmat removal of that foundations, all your permits go for coastal architectural. It's very difficult to build for less than eight hundred square feet.
Eight hundred.
Nine hundred to a thousand square.
And it helps, you know, it's a, it's a, it finishes and happens.
Yeah.
Okay, Alan, check.
Yeah, I, I would say that is exactly correct.
Yeah.
Just from my answer's point, this is a general question. Um, if there's a sense that the magnitude of the fires and, uh, Fair Plan's budget do not actually handle all the properties that were destroyed and or damaged. Uh, so if you had a house burned to the ground, or you had a situation, like the lady said, you have ash in your insulation. How is Fair Plan going to, uh, hold us off? I guess is my question, because there isn't enough budget. And it seems clear to me and others that Fair Plan has to make critical decisions that might not be logical or consistent if it was just a hundred houses that burned down, right? This, uh, people having their, uh, the idea of having their insurance revoked because of a monthly payment, that's odd. Usually, most of the time, there would be some kind of grace period or something like that. Or the idea that having ash in your insulation is usually a health consideration. The idea that that is not covered where routinely it would be feels like a lot of downward pressure.
Well, you're, you covered a lot of different things. So so what do you want to talk about first? The financial
Solvency.
Solvency, okay?
Fine.
So Fair Plan is a not-for-profit organization, where the goal is to be a short-term solution for you, because nothing else is available. So as far as our our coverages are very basic, it's never designed, it it's it's not designed to be, um, a competitive, um, top-end solution for you. It's it's basic insurance, and and a lot of it was, a lot of it was designed in nineteen sixty-eight. You know, from the next big event for the Fair Plan was the Northern Earthquake in nineteen ninety-four. From the Northern Earthquake to the Paradise Fire, the the Fair Plan was very small, very barely utilized throughout the state. They're on a very small scale, and that's where it it's catapulting. So everything has evolved, the the need, the the, the products, adjustments, the things that we've been, it's just been constant. And and if you go onto our website, it's under key statistics, it'll show you our growth pattern and and what zip codes we've been growing in the most. So a not-for-profit, by definition, does not have profit. We do not hold, traditionally, we don't hold, our goal isn't profit, our, it's here to be a resource. So, um, that's the design of it. And there's, the same model is used in thirty other states the same way. And we have mechanisms, so we collect premiums, so we have to have actually early sound rates. So again, our rates are higher than others because a hundred percent of what we're writing, or writing is what nobody else will write. And so it's more risky, so our rates are gonna be higher. And then our, but by design, ideally, we're gonna be able to cover our losses through the premiums that we have. And up until this point, we've been able to do that. Through all the major fires of the last few years, we've been able to do that. There are mechanisms in place and that have been exercised to pay, continue to pay claims. And there hasn't been one hesitation. I mean, it's not, uh, it's not bankruptcy, it's not insolvency. It's a mechanism that that goes into play when we get to that level. Um, the Fair Plan is not intended to be a long-term solution. It's intended to be a stopgap. Unfortunately, our state is in such a tough time right now with carriers not being willing to write, that all the pressure has been put on the Fair Plan. If you live in Nevada, so where I'm in, we're near South Lake Tahoe, if you live on the Nevada side, they don't have a Fair Plan. So if you're buying a home in South Lake Tahoe right now, on the Nevada side, you can't get insurance because they don't have a Fair Plan. It's the same, the companies are treating that part of the town the same way, but there's no Fair Plan in Nevada. So they can't even get Fair Plan. I I wish, I believe, I wish, and everyone in the Fair Plan wishes to see, we want to see the market restored. And and we're trying to be the best option as possible, but it's, but it's, um, it's just a different model, and, um, we're doing the best we can. I'll look, you pick, because I don't, I keep picking people.
Carrie.
Okay.
Go for it. Carrie. Trying to get in.
I've got a couple of questions.
Oh, very good.
My broker wants to know if there's an easier way to get the claim adjusted.
Okay, very good.
My brother's doing a lot of this stuff right now.
They can contact me, and I'll be happy.
I gave you your contact information, that's perfect. Okay, second question, um, and that is, when when do you expect the the cap to go up to more, more than three million? Is that something that's upcoming, or is that in the in the works?
It's something that's asked a lot, and, um, obviously, in these, in a lot of markets in California, it's not enough. And, um, so again, it's not, there's not a plan for it.
Right.
Um, so I I couldn't, I couldn't answer that question, but
Okay, I'll tell him you can't answer that question.
Yeah.
Okay.
The third thing is that I have the Firewise discount. I mean, I have, we have the Firewise discount because we work so hard to become a Firewise community. By the way, I'm the co-president of the Topanga County Fire State Council.
Right.
So we work, we work with, we work with the paper and the times on the, yeah. Beth Burnin, my other partner, really did the heavy work. I'm just kind of like the lightweight.
No, it's great.
But but one thing that I did also do is I did get the Home Hardening and Defensible States basic discount. So I'm getting twenty-five percent between that and the and the Firewise designation. And I would just encourage everybody here to go to our website, n t c f s c dot I will say it one more time, m t c f s c dot org. And what you can do is you can get, there's a link to getting a home addition zone evaluation where members from the Resource Conservation District of Santa Monica Mountains will come to your house, make you, may give you recommendations. And if you follow those recommendations, you can very well qualify for this additional discount from the Fair Plan.
Okay, all right. So hold on, wait, we want to, there's a fellow who's home burned.
Nancy.
Great. Okay, there's a fellow who's home burned down, and we're gonna try to get him on to ask a question. Adam, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, oh my god, the volume is really low. Let me see if I can just
Does this help a little bit? My audible?
Sorry.
Can you hear me okay or no?
Oh, good, yay, old-fashioned dial. Actually, you've been good at this. So, okay, very good. All right, Adam, go ahead.
Yes, if you can hear me, um, this is about, uh, a home that is not burned down but has smoke damage, uh, in Topanga. Uh, and I I first want to say I really appreciate Peter's being here and appreciate the existence of the Fair Plan. But, uh, people should be aware that this, uh, notion that the Fair Plan doesn't cover smoke damage unless there is physical damage is under great contention. And there's a class action lawsuit against the Fair Plan for refusing to pay for smoke damage, which clearly is covered in my policy, the box is checked, that says that smoke damage is, you know, a a part of the coverage. And it says in the policy that the evidence of smoke damage is that it smells like smoke. We have a very smoky, unlivable house right now that needs to be cleaned, and all the remediation quotes we're getting are between like twenty and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm hearing Fair Plan assert that they are not responsible for that because there's not quote-unquote "physical damage." So, uh, just to let people know that this is something that you can fight and should fight, I believe, because it seems very unfair.
Okay, Adam, can you put any information? First of all, thank you for that. That backs up something someone else had said, and I want Phil to have a chance to respond. But could you put any links to information about people who want to appeal or fight that denial in into the chat if you have any information handy? If not, I'll follow up with you after the meeting to get it and give it to people to help them if they're having problems.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm driving, I'm driving to the meeting.
Okay, don't do that now. Don't do that now. Okay, I'll follow up with you. I will follow up with you. Okay.
Thank you all.
Adam, you're terrific.
So again, that's general commerce, that's a general general statement, but I mean, the fact is, um, we do cover smoke, smoke damage. I'm sorry, no, you don't.
Well, it's, it's, please don't be rude.
Okay, but very specifically
Right, right, there is a contentious stuff.
Specifically, the policy says you only cover direct physical damage. Okay, I understand that. Now, if it says we cover smoke, what aspect of the smoke is covered? Because the adjusters are all saying that you don't pay for general cleaning. What is general cleaning? Now, I can understand if you've got a little bit of construction or we don't pay for that, okay, fine. But this stuff has been shown to have asbestos, lead, and other components to it that make it a hazardous material. The woman up here that said, I've been cleaning my home. Well, because quite honestly, the fifty thousand dollar price tag to have Serpo do it is not acceptable. So if she's cleaning this stuff and it's full of lead and asbestos, she's risking her health because this is the only policy that doesn't pay for cleaning of ash. Now, I know a little bit about your background, actually, I think we have met once before. Um, so whether it's Chubb or Nationwide or any of the companies that you're so familiar with, they all pay for this for a reason. California Fair Plan does not, but it doesn't say that in the policy. It says we pay for smoke. And I ask adjuster after adjuster, then what are you paying for? Does that mean if I wipe the ash off and it leaves a black mark, you pay for that?
Okay, so let's give a couple of examples. But then you put a lot in that, good, good way to flesh it out.
I know he understands what I'm referring to.
And plenty of brokers, if you mind, who says that the policy, there, it is subject to some interpretation, but can you give a couple of sort of specific examples where smoke, physical damage, like something they like qualified in their mind, Fair Plan's mind, as smoke damage that would be coverable under this physical damage?
Well, again, I think that the smoke, smoke causes damage. So so smoke can cause physical damage. The smoke itself can cause physical damage.
Like discoloration, does that count?
Yes. So again, I, at this point, you know, I I think there's the the way our, the way our, and I assure you, our, we deliver on the way our contract is written.
But then you seem like you are, though. We've heard multiple people say that they're not.
Okay, okay, so he, okay, okay, let's make this a little negotiation, which, yeah, you're a role, and he's a broker, he's a role. But it does seem like there's legitimate, um, discontent with how it's being interpreted. That's not his role, but he can just say what they do in general. But I think, I agree, Adam, join the lawsuit. If you feel like it's not, they're not honoring it, join the lawsuit and be sure that, you know, all of these examples of denial are brought to the fore and that it can be hammered out in more detail in policies going forward and hopefully retroactive.
Can we just get a definition of what physical damage is? What is that? Does it smell, or is it in the ash? Yeah, I'll have to get a, I'll get you a, okay, a specific example.
I'd love to jump in here, and I'm just gonna push myself on.
Oh, yeah.
Jim.
So when this first, this environmental aspect of smoke and everything came around, it started up in, I think it's Devil County near Tahoe. You should probably know it, where they, they saved a bunch of houses around, and then they realized that the ones that burned, they had a huge record collection, an L P election, and it had all burnt, and it's all super toxic. So they had to immediately go down and shut off all all the, um, ways for the water from rain to wash that stuff down into like Tahoe. And then the person who created that, I'm forgetting his name, he has been down here many times, the Wolsey Fire. It's in particular where mobile homes are also filled with all sorts of rubbers and things like this that, you know, you don't know where they came from, you know, across the globe for sealing the window. So they were using that methodology that he had used to try to identify. And that was early on down here to to worry about that stuff. Now we have in Palisades and the Eaton areas, and, um, they're having the same, same problem because you were talking about ashes, you know, down, but the houses that were burned away. You still have to deal with, you block on your property and you take the rag and you just, you just take it, you lift the board, piece of one of the big winds comes.
Are you jumping in there just so, that's the Army Corps of Engineers is largely taking care of a lot of debris removal and ash right now. And somehow, later on, they may get reimbursed by the Fair Plan. Do you know how that works? I mean, I don't think it's
Well, debris removal, that coverage, that that component's a little different. But but again, I think, yeah, I think, believe me, I I hear what everybody's saying, I've seen firsthand, and and I know what expectations are versus what the policies provide in, by definition. And it's not typical, it's not what, it's not robust like you would normally get from, and this is where those other companies that that want to grow in the market would normally make their, they would build attributes to their policy that make them more desirable. And and ours is very basic, and and that's the bottom line. And and the fact is, this, these fires were unique in the wind, the 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 way I've never seen the the amount of soot inside homes that were in, to to that degree, that were even far away. You know, so so again, I understand what you're saying, but it, but as far as what, the definition of what the policy covers and, um, what, you know, that, it's different than what we want it to be sometimes.
Okay, we're, we're Wait, wait, respect and leadership.
Hi, thanks for coming. My question is, how do I increase my coverage? It's been the same for the past four or so years. I've done some upgrades on my house, but our broker said that those upgrades don't qualify, but it would end up so much more to replace.
Yeah, so very good question and very important. So first off, the Fair Plan policy is customizable. So the amount of coverage you buy for your dwelling, for your personal property, for your fair rental value, that is a dollar amount within the three million dollars that you choose with your broker. So if this doesn't feel right, there's a term called insured to value, making sure your home has the right amount of coverage to rebuild it with like and equality material today. So the home we have today, if it burned to the ground, what would it cost to rebuild it? That's the amount of coverage you want to have. So your broker, I I encourage everyone, it's called the annual review, you just get together, it's like an annual tune-up. It's not about selling me more stuff, it's about making sure my home's insured properly and I have all the right stuff. That's what you want to make sure you do, what's called a replacement cost estimator, which is, and every company has them. It 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 simulates what it would cost to rebuild their home. Talk to, but compare that to, um, contractors in the area that have that knowledge because the tool is just a tool. I mean, there, it gives you range, but in the day, you want to know that your home is insured for the right amount of coverage.
Okay, two more questions.
I just wanted to come back to the sort of general solvency issues.
Okay.
Because I understand your question, I understand your answer. Because the Fair Plan is backstopped by the private insurers, it's kind of by definition, is supposed to have enough money to pay like premiums from people, if you don't have enough money to pay, the private insurers are supposed to step in and backstop.
Yeah.
I'm sure all of us have read, uh, quite a few places in the news in the last two or three or four weeks that
We didn't hear your question.
Can you hear the question?
Hold on, one closer to the left.
Yeah, I had a forty-five minute
Hello?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, great. So a lot of us are worried about the financial future of the Fair Plan, whether it's going to continue to exist, what the people are getting on renewal notices. And I get the basic concept that you collect premiums, you've got a certain amount of money, and the private insurers are supposed to be backstopping it. So in theory, you should have enough money to pay off current claims, right? But we keep reading in the papers that Fair Plan supposedly has two or three or four hundred million dollars in assets, but they're anticipating five to ten billion dollars worth of claims that would be covered by Fair Plan. So I guess the private insurers would step in and cover those.
Yeah.
But
I actually answered the question.
What does that mean about the future of the Fair Plan? And, you know, a lot of us who whose homes weren't damaged are are concerned that we're gonna be non-renewed in six or twelve months. So, you know, is this something that the state of California is committed to absolutely continuing under any circumstances?
Go ahead.
Well, I think, I think you have to look at the model, how this, like Citizens Insurance in Florida, same, so it's the largest insurer in Florida. I think, I think you have to look at the model, how this, like Citizens Insurance in Florida, same, so it's the largest insurer in Florida, and it's the Fair Plan in Florida. And obviously, our goal is to not be the biggest, but that's the direction we're going, we're very, you know, and I, like I said, I'm a policyholder of the Fair Plan, and all my neighbors are, and my community is, so I want to give them the same reassurance of what's available today, knowing what I know, the mechanisms that are in place make the Fair Plan a viable option for us because nothing else is available right now. And that's, that's just where we're at, nothing else is available. We're not in the Fair Plan because we want to be, we're in the Fair Plan because nothing else is available. And I don't feel like I'm gambling when I'm going to sleep at night, I know, I know how it works. It sounds ugly, the way it plays out financially with the backstop, as an example, the way you referred to that, it sounds ugly, but it's how it's supposed to work, it's not supposed to be like that forever. So hopefully, we'll get to a point where the market's restored and that's not a situation anymore. But that's really the way it's going to play out, and that's, I have faith in it and.
Yeah, that was good, just quickly, I actually, of all the insurers, I can least worry about the Fair Plan. Because basically, everything, they have like multiple ways they can get money. In addition, the CDI, the California Department of Insurance, is now allowing, yay, not really, but in terms of solvency, it's good, they're now allowing the private insurers to charge us for the cost of reinsurance. So even if these guys don't have enough money in their savings or what have you, they can go to the reinsurance, you know, coverage, and then that will cover us. In addition, there are two other ways the Fair Plan can get money. One is by going to the other private, the other one is, actually, there's three. So the other, the second one is, they can do an assessment on all of us, like through the private firm. So they go to the private insurers, and the private insurers, and then insurance passing assessment on to us. So there will always be a way to get money. Lastly, this is a new way that passed at the last year. A senator proposed a bill where the Fair Plan can also go to the bond market, the public bond market, and issue bonds for I think between two to five billion dollars in money. So of all of the entities providing insurance, Fair Plan actually very well insulated from insolvent.
Okay, one last question. Dawn, Andrea, or.
I have a very quick one.
A quick, say quick.
Yes, yes, wind damage during those bad winds. Not a lot, two thousand plus. Is it covered by milk, everyone?
It depends what, yeah, what happened, depends, spec sheet.
It lifted up the roof of my entry porch, lifted it up, and it's corrugated.
So it's a covered peril, did you file a claim?
No.
Okay, it's a covered peril, so it's something you definitely want to talk to.
This is going to be the easiest, dumbest question, so I give you a sophomore. So if I have a two million dollar policy, okay, and my house burns down, can I, do I get two million dollars and I can either move to Utah? Or I can rebuild my house? And if I'm rebuilding my house, if it's a one-story, one-hundred-year-old house built with wood, could I build a two-story concrete house instead with that same two million dollars? Do I just get, do I get the money to do what I want?
Can you take the money and run?
Yes, you have replacement cost, which is a box you want to check, it's called replacement cost on your box, and that's another key thing, take away, replacement cost, you want to have that for your stuff, personal property and for dwelling, there's no cost for it, but you want to have those boxes checked because that's going to give you the best claim settlement options to do that.
I can do either one, though, I can move or build?
You can move or build, you own your land still, you can sell your land, because a lot of people did that, like in Paradise and Caldwell Fire, a lot of people, and it surprised me, I mean, everyone just deals with it differently, but people will, they'll buy elsewhere and sell the land later or just do it.
Well, yeah, and it depends, if it's like two houses versus, you know.
Yeah, you can build whatever you want.
If a claim gets denied, how do you appeal? Okay, that's a very important one, okay, we're going to wind it down, okay.
If your claim is denied, there is a specific appeal process, and again, I would work with your broker to navigate.
I don't have a broker.
Is there a web, an email?
On our, on our website, it will have that under claims. Under claims on your website, and before I leave, I'll make sure I get you that information.
NCS, if you want to get in the line at the end, so if you want clarity on it, but it's on our website, under claims. All right, so let's just encapsulate this, okay, okay, one second, okay. First, I want to say this, there are a lot of questions that weren't able to be answered, and some that weren't able to be answered in the full clarity and depth that people want. So let me ask you this, let me put you on the spot, Phil. If people submit their questions to you, and I would recommend that you send it to him directly, NCS, so we can also follow up and know what the patterns are that people are asking. If you could do that, can you commit to maybe up to a hundred or two hundred?
Whatever, whatever.
Okay, great, okay, very good. Okay, oh, I'm sorry, okay, Karen from the town council, Karen, Karen, and our email is contact@tepangatowncouncil.org. Contact, yeah, okay, very good, so email, CCS and email.
We'll give you answers to every question.
And then we'll compile a list, so we can also send it to our legislators so they know where people have any problems. This fellow, Dave Winter, did ask a question where he said, you know, defining basic and things like that and providing clarity is very important, so he's the one who gave me that idea. We can have one more question then, what I want to let you know is somebody from the California Department of Insurance is going to tell you about upcoming meeting where you can get more one-on-one help and general overview information. So one more question, who is, okay, one more question then.
I think we're going, February eighteen, the superintendent of the Health Department of California, Ricardo Lara, declared that if your house is two hundred and fifty yards from the burn, that is considered toxic. And our adjuster came and he, my house is like across the street, your house is burned, and the third house, and then the whole beach burned, and the adjuster said, "No, no, no." And the house, I can't be there because my throat and my, my, anyway, so I'd like to know about the two hundred and fifty yards.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar about the two hundred and fifty yards.
I can kindly give it to you, Ricardo Lara.
Yeah, 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 that's a great, submit that question, please, NCS, we would love to know.
Yeah, I said yesterday to my adjuster that unfortunately, I left my house the seventh of January, I'm still not there, and she keeps saying, "I'm working on her policy, working, not leaving." I'm still, I'm jumping from friends to friends, but we have no help.
Before you leave today, we'll have an adjuster talk to you.
I've got the list, I've got the whole, okay, very good.
Karen, one more really important thing.
Okay, Ryan.
That is, my friend was evacuated for nine days, I hear that Fair Plan can reimburse you for the cost.
Yeah, the reimbursement.
That fair rental value.
So how do you submit a claim?
Submit a claim, submit a claim, you can go onto our website, submit a claim. The term is fair rental value, and you go from the date of mandatory evacuation to the date that the house is allowed to go back. And there's no deductible for that.
That was out for nine days, and I think he got thirty-five hundred back, so something to think about.
All right, all right, oh yeah, keep in mind, you might now want to file a claim and then potentially have your rates go up, that's something, but, okay.
Catastrophic event, that's not going to go against you. And any claims experience you have right now is not going to go against you.
So listen, so can I have Rob Obadoza, Obadoza, from the California Department of Insurance, going to come for a minute and let you know about some upcoming CDI meetings that will do something similar to this, but the benefit thing will be longer? And you can actually do a meeting appointment, there will also be more people there from different towns and cities. But, go ahead, Rob.
Hi, everyone, thank you all for inviting me here today. First of all, I wanted to thank Phil from the Fair Plan. I want to thank Phil, I thank Phil from the Fair Plan for providing a lot of this good information for today, you know, I was just sitting there. This was almost focused on the Fair Plan, and, you know, we had the department, of course, even a lot of the meetings that we've been having with like rebuilding in the Palisades and Altona, you know, we've getting a lot of questions about the Fair Plan. So it was good for me to kind of sit there, listen in and help provide context to some of those questions that a lot of people aren't asking of the Fair Plan, and it's great to have Phil here to be able to help with you guys meet one-on-one and get the help that you guys need with the rebuilding process or anything else that you have with your insurance needs at the moment. So I also wanted to mention that, next, and I wanted to mention this as well because after the Palisades and Altona fires, we held insurance workshops in Santa Monica and Pasadena to get people help, direct help with their insurance companies that they needed, including the Fair Plan. And Phil and his team was great there to be able to sit down and meet one-on-one right there with people who were affected by those fires, in some cases walk out with checks in hand to start that rebuilding process. And I wanted to let you guys know that we are hosting those workshops again over the next couple of weekends. The first one is on March eighth, so next Saturday, at the Skirball Center, from ten AM to six PM. You can call us, I'll give Karen the flyer to send out, but you can call us at our eight-hundred number, which is one-eight-hundred-nine-two-seven-four-three-five-seven. And you can make an appointment and meet with us one-on-one, and most likely, Phil and his team will be there as well. So if you've got any questions about your policy, how to file claims, things like that, you can come to our workshop and we can help you out. If you don't make an appointment, we'll still take you, I mean, there's, we'll see everybody, the walk-ins and everything, we'll stay as long as possible with the needs, but definitely come see us at the Skirball Center. And then we're going to have another one the following weekend on the seventeenth, the fifteenth, at John Your High School in Pasadena, if you happen to be out on the, in that area as well. So, so yeah, recommend everyone, if you have some insurance questions, want to get some help, need help from the Department of Insurance, come see us in person at the Skirball Center next Saturday. But we also have representatives always at the Disaster Recovery Center at UCLA. Oh, yes, exactly right, so definitely stop by if you have any questions.
Your number.
Oh, the number is one-eight-hundred-nine-two-seven-four-three-five-seven. Oh, and, you know, make sure to bring copies of your policies, any documents that you have, so we can help you out in any way that we can. But yeah, thank you to Karen for inviting me, thank you for putting on this workshop, they're excellent, I'll stick around, answer any questions.
Thank you, Rob, thank you, okay, so, thank you everyone for coming, so.
You know what, I do want to mention one thing. So, so this has been a big, something that's been coming up, so the areas that I cover, like Tepanga, Santa Barbara, Ventura, but especially in the Palisades, the question of the two hundred and fifty feet that somebody mentioned earlier, yes. So that is tied to like living expenses and inhabitability of property. So basically, a lot of people are having issues because, you know, they're, they don't feel safe in their home because there's still toxins in there, they're still doing debris cleanup, the EPA hasn't gone in there yet, the Army has got to go do their thing as well. Even if your house didn't burn down, a lot of the area is still, there's debris, asbestos, all those, that stuff that's lingering in the air. And, you know, early on, they would say like, you know, just trust your nose, if you don't really smell anything, it's probably safe, but that doesn't really cut it, there's a lot of toxin there that just aren't detectable by smell. So the commissioner put out a bulletin urging insurers to continue paying those living expenses due to uninhabitability. And that two hundred and fifty yards comes from the LA County Department of Public Health. They put out that notice saying, yeah, even if your house didn't burn down because you're within proximity of burn debris, then you should still be eligible for collecting those living expenses while you're, while there's still debris moving from your home. So we've urged insurance companies to do that, I don't know if, like you said, I don't know if Fair Plan is doing that, a lot of other companies are complying with that, but that's basically where that comes from, is the county of public health saying it's not safe to live. Commissioner Lara, as you've mentioned, saying that insurers should continue paying that. Some insurers, carriers have, some haven't, but that's what we're trying to work at, is making sure, because, yeah, it's still definitely not safe to go return to those areas, absolutely. Oh, yeah, 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 again, and like when they said, like, you know, trust your nose, I'm like, you know, like, that really doesn't work. But then there's also, like, it's going to be a long process too, because they've got to do soil testing, there's questions about bringing that debris out and getting it back up into the air and all that stuff, so it's a long, it's going to be a long process, but right now, the department's stance is those insurance companies should still be paying those living expenses. Yeah, that's the thing, so like, again, as Phil said, because we can't, so because it's an urgent, we can't force them to do that, that's the thing. And, you know, we've talked to the Fair Plan, we've communicated with them and things like that, but, and as Phil said, you know, there's a holding to their policies, but like I said, some companies have, but the, but that's what the insurers want.
Okay, great, all right, you can have ten questions, you have one question, I just wanted to say, for people who want, and actually, Rob, it would be great if you could answer questions while people are waiting to speak with Phil. Okay, so, for the next session, we're starting with the people who had pre-registered and asked to have an individualized session.